They will call this Jameson City Council Work Session to order for Monday, November eighteenth. Please follow the roll.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Here.
Brackman?
Here.
Paterneedy?
Here.
Reynolds?
Um.
Faulkner?
Here.
Von Figlio?
Here.
DeBursa?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
President Wolf?
Here.
At this time, give opportunities for the Republicans to speak if there's anyone here would like to speak to council. Please give your name and address and limited remarks for five minutes.
I don't know if it's five minutes, but I hope so. It's not very long. I'm Paul Wolf. I live at two twelve Fulton Street in Tanshaw. And I'm here tonight to address issues in my neighborhood. My wife and children no longer feel safe. Number of occupied buildings on my block is nine, with two in danger of being condemned. This is more without residents than there are with. This has made the block attractive to the homeless population ever since the state of emergency was declared in Jamestown, New York. I think it was the summer. When they were chased out of areas like Chatacoin Woods, Riverwalk, they migrated to residential areas, to the condemned houses. They break into them, they steal everything of value, you know, like pipes, water, et cetera. They do their drug paraphernalia laying on the ground where there's children in the neighborhood. And from what I understand from my phone, the police department this morning, the entrance into these properties is only a violation. They're given an appearance ticket and let go. This isn't right that we have to live in fear of citizens. Sorry, it's so small, I lose my place. We offer, my neighbor and I were trying to do the whole neighborhood watch thing. I noticed it was in the news a couple of years ago and there wasn't much interest in the community. We do our part. We call the police department, we take videos, we take pictures of the people because unfortunately, it's not a high priority crime. So the response time is slow. Last night about a suspicious, not last night, two nights ago, about a suspicious suitcase in the middle of the road. I waited almost an hour and a half. This makes us not trust law enforcement. I don't see the point in calling the police anymore. I I get told by the patrol officers to contact the detective unit. This morning, when I came in to talk to a detective, because I've been transferred to a machine twice now, I was told detectives will investigate it because it's a violation. So the patrol officers are giving us wrong information, again instilling more distrust. Sorry. I am older, I'm forty-five years old. I remember what happened in California when community policing first became a thing. I'm sure some of you are as old as me, if not older. You remember the stories about the Army Ranger who decided to take on grips? Because he was tired of the drug dealing and the nuisances in the community. And I'm to that point. I don't know what to do. I have no faith in our police department anymore. We're not getting help. This is a problem. My daughter walks to school and home with nine-one-one ready to be dialed. My son doesn't go out without trying to appear homeless. So that he doesn't get harassed, he doesn't get assaulted, these things happen. And we're losing faith. I humbly ask, who work together, the established neighborhoods, community watchers? You're effective, because I know that when it first started out, you know, it was a lot of loud dog calls, things of that nature. I was around when that stuff first started. And I know it's not as effective as it could be. But these calls about people trying doors on occupied homes, about going into abandoned property, I feel like they should be given priority, even if by state law, it's only a violation. Because they're not learning anything by this. And I think we need to kick that up to the state and let them know this bail reform isn't working. As far as the community policing, neighborhood watch and things like that go, I also request that we enable citizens arrests. We allow us to hold them until the police arrive. And they can be caught and allowed accountable. What we're doing now isn't working. And there's no reason that an eleven-year-old daughter should walk to school with nine-one-one ready to be dialed. No. I feel like if we do this community outreach with neighborhood watch, community policing, allow people to help you, it's gonna restore the trust in law enforcement. Because we are going to see results. And I would just like to make this clear, I am a three-time felon. I have spent time in state prisons. If anyone should be against things like this, and I'm not. I gave my time and I paid my dues. And these people are not having the benefit of the harm. And this is not right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is the section, I assume, between eighth and strong?
Yes, sir.
Are you on me?
Specifically about such of Fulton Street.
And I know real, can you just take a second and address that section of three?
Sorry, what?
Fulton.
Fulton.
Two hundred one.
He's asking questions about how many houses in the
Oh, so I believe there are six houses that are slated for demolition.
Okay, the last I heard was three. I've been in part paying touch with the Department of Development and all that. I tried all that on this.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed the first part because I was talking with another constituent.
No, just
I don't want to ask you to repeat yourself, but are you from two twelve?
Yes.
Okay. So I know that we have some code violations that you've reported that we are working on. Is there anything more specific that you want to hear from me?
From the Department of Development? No, you folks are doing exactly what you can.
Okay.
And I know that it's not the city of Jamestown that makes these bail reform rules. I know it's not you guys on the police force that arrest them and want to let them go with an appearance ticket. You have to. But this isn't working. It's not helping us trust the police. And I know that that should probably be picked up to the state level, but this is the first step.
Are the buildings secured? And then these people are ripping plywood off and into them?
They're secured, from what I understand, by the fire department, which consists of putting a board over the front door.
Yeah.
And doing nothing else. All of the windows are left. They go in and out of the windows, they go in and out through basement entrances. They hang out in driveways and drop their needles. I have also called Evergreen Health Organization, because they do needle change. They actually sent a team out and pulled seven syringes out of one driveway on that block.
We can, the properties that we have control over, we can have them better secured.
Okay.
So I will talk with our code enforcement about that and have them take a look at, you know, at least lower floor windows and any other doorways that might be open.
Yeah, because I do know the fire department has done it, specifically two thirty-five.
Yep, yes, yes. And I know they have our request several times. And they will continue, it's a problem that we have, until they come down, we'll just have to keep reporting them. But we will do that. So if we do see that they need to be let us know.
I think the serious problem that needs to be addressed is the fact that when tourist season was around, it was a state of emergency. When it's us citizens suffering behind this, it doesn't seem like anybody cares. We live here. We're not just here to see loose. And I apologize if that sounds disrespectful.
Nope, that is absolutely your perspective.
But that's where it seems is happening.
I invite you to come and spend a day with us in DOD, because I can assure you that you will not find a group of people that care more.
I would love to, in all honesty, I'd do anything to come out of my neighborhood.
We are open door, anytime. You don't even have to let us know you're coming. That is, you can come at any time. You can do a ride along with code enforcement if you wish, you can hang out.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how much I can do quickly.
I've never been offered that.
You can go for a ride. In fact, we would be happy to, you know, take a ride with you down Fulton Street and listen to your concerns.
I will absolutely I could even show you, know how they go into the places, so you folks know how to better secure them. I mean, I'm absolutely on board with that.
Yeah.
It's just, like I said, it's affecting citizens here. We live here.
Absolutely. Yeah. We're happy to do that.
And you don't need to name addresses or anything like that, but do you feel that on your block, there's possibly
Drug activity?
Where drugs are being sold?
Oh, absolutely.
So I mean, if they're coming there, they're probably not coming there just to use, they're probably purchasing.
No, they're not. Every new face that comes into the neighborhood, they go directly to the house that I call the meth house.
Don't, you don't Okay, yeah, you don't need to hear this.
The lady that goes there, she goes to the methadone clinic every day. They show up before she leaves, they show up after she gets home. And from there, they go into the condemned buildings. They've actually, last night, were trying my neighbor's back door to get into the upstairs apartment that's vacant. So it's not just unoccupied buildings that they're trying doors on.
Can we get more, I know you guys are short, but can we get like maybe some beat patrols over there? Or cars driving through there, just a strong presence on that block?
And I mean, again, I understand the whole deep end of the police thing. I know that manpower is short and I understand you guys have to prioritize, but we don't feel safe anymore.
I think it will help when those that are slated for demolition. I think, I mean, it won't solve everything, but I think it will help.
It will, and I agree with that wholeheartedly, but it's not a solution. It's gotta go somewhere else.
This is true.
Yeah, they'll go to another neighborhood.
Yeah.
It might help you out, but
Right, and I mean, yes, directly, I care about my neighborhood specifically, but we all live here. We all live here together. I mean, I don't know how many of you folks live here in Jamestown, but
We all live here.
It's getting really bad in the lower-income neighborhoods because of the availability of things that they can sell.
We will definitely put it on the radar for leasing for DOD.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you would like to come in and you wanna call, I think you've probably talked with Liz
I've talked with a few people over there. As a matter of fact, I think Jose was sent to our neighbor's house today.
Uh, probably, yeah.
Yeah, like I said, I have been involved with all of it. We're trying. I mean, I've heard it was a beautiful neighborhood at one time. And we'd really like to see it that way again.
I know there's a lot of concerns by your neighbors just up on Lakeview as well, so I've taken some calls.
I don't know about Lakeview, but I know they come from Lakeview to go to that house also. They cut through the backyard and whatnot.
I've been feeling calls from those people's houses.
Yeah, it's terrible. Guaranteed, the ones on Lakeview are coming from that house on Fulton. Because that's what they do. They go through the backyards, cut over the fence and then right back.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anybody else?
Just waiting for a smart comment. Elizabeth. Elizabeth at eighty-three forty-six Falconer Street. I don't know how I talk about anything after that.
Sorry.
No, no, that's right. I guess I have some questions. I have some I know that last time, people were talking about the Fenton roof and stuff like that. And I was curious as to how does the city, does the city owns the building? And then is the city responsible for the employees in there?
Maintenance.
Just maintenance.
It's a park. It's a parking.
So
The house sits on a park. It was deeded to the city.
Okay, so, yep.
It was manually deeded to us.
Oh, cool. So one of the things, since I moved back to Jamestown, I have thought about wondering why tours of Jamestown aren't done. So we have beautiful trolleys at CHQ now. And I just wrote down some numbers that if you were to charge twenty dollars a person to get on a trolley at the Fenton Museum and travel throughout the city, that it could be a little bit of revenue for the Fenton Museum. I think it's a great idea, but I think all my ideas are great. So I think that what this would not only do is that you would, because they have the microphone, it could be like the double deck I kind of pictured it like the double-decker bus of Jamestown. So they could go around the city and do tours and talk about the history, because as we all know, the history in Jamestown is big. And we don't use it enough. We haven't used it enough, and I'm not, you know, everyone says, oh, the city should do this. And I always think, since I've been coming to all these meetings, what do people really mean? What do they mean by the city? The city means everyone in the city, right? Not the mayor, not Crystal, not the council, everyone. So if everybody just comes up with a little bit of things to do, then the community becomes better. So CHQ, or the Chamber of Commerce, did a little make, made in Faulkner, and it was a great event. And so I had already kind of had the idea before they did that, and then I thought, wow, this is really cool. For one, Jamestown should do it also, and the Fenton Museum could make a killing out of it. You could do a tour through the cemetery, you could do a tour down Lakeview Avenue, you could do a tour. What do we have, three historical districts in the city of Jamestown? I mean, we don't teach our children, we don't teach the public, we don't teach tourism enough. And that would give a really good perspective on tourism. Like, at twenty-four people, I think twenty-four people fit on those trolleys, you know, at twenty bucks, that's four hundred and eighty dollars a pop. So after time, you know, you're not gonna make any money back and you're not gonna get rich off of this. But I think it's a good way to start to source some income into the Fenton, or the cemetery, or whoever gets involved. And also, one thing I thought about just the other day is, has anybody ever reached out to a developer to build something on top of the parking garages? So we have three parking garages in the city of Jamestown. I called the woman in charge of the airport today to see if there was a no-fly zone. So if you have a no-fly zone, and she called it aviation easement. So if you live five miles from an airport, you have to, they give you a study that says you can't build this high. So I was wondering if Jamestown had that because of the helicopters. You know, if you go to Buffalo, they fly off the roof of a hospital. We fly off the ground. So she said there was really no restrictions per se that would build that tall. But because it's hard to live downtown or park downtown, like, I went to the Wellman Building to deliver an order and I thought, God, this would be a really nice place to live, but where would I park? Where do you park, Crystal? Where do you park at the Wellman Building, you know?
They have parking
There's no parking lot that you have.
Is it downstairs? Like, do they have underground parking or not?
No, there's a whole parking lot on the side of the building that
On the side, oh, so like where the Rusty Nail used to be?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. I was just curious, because, you know, that parking garage on First Street would, is the infrastructure made enough where you could build it on top of that mark?
I have no idea.
Okay. I know it's an off-the-wall idea. I just, I thought about it the other day because I thought, gosh.
Do you want a second, you mean?
The second main.
Second main, it's not.
No, I mean, any
It's not, no.
It's not.
It was constructed to be a parking garage.
To be a parking
Well, it was constructed also to give us the option at a later date to add another layer of two of parking, and that was it.
Nothing, not the, okay.
We can't, we have to
I was just curious. It was just one of those thoughts that came to my
The original one was taken down and then they didn't want to put that big of a one, but they put two levels with the idea that if we ever needed a wanted more, they could add another layer or two.
Because that's what that was, a parking garage before it was?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's really always been a parking garage? Because I remember as a kid, it being like something, but I couldn't remember what it was. I just, I, that's about it.
Thank you. Go on.
Anybody else? Move on. Billy, you want to do the housing?
Sure. We had several folks comment during our session on housing. Missy Paterneedy spoke about hopefully getting the city to cooperate or investigate alternative housing situations and circumstances that arise when it is not a city problem, but it becomes one with DSS. A call to action to work with the homeless coalition. She cited an example of a young woman and family who were asked to leave. They're residents and ended up being settled in Dunkirk, but still works in Jamestown. So we suggested that Missy and the young woman stay true to their mission by getting ahold of GSS folks to move back to the city in timely fashion. We had Jonathan Leeper, who's from Indiana, show up and speak on behalf of his mother and fronty's family for some violations of code with high grass. And had some back and forth discussion, I guess, to explain to them the circumstances of that particular property in question. That it's not condemned, it's not, it might be a bank-owned, it might not be. The mortgage might be discharged. There's a couple of different factors involved as to who to bill if we do any work on that property to cut the grass. Doug Champ spoke on losing population and how the tax increase, any tax increase affects the poverty level of folks more so than any other residence, commercial or industrial, and may create an outmigration of more folks than already left since nineteen fifty, when we saw our last positive population increase. Chris Fredrickson came and shared with us something regarding landlords' good cause eviction law, which was passed back in, I believe you said, April of two thousand twenty-four. And municipalities have an opportunity to opt in and participate in that law. We don't have a whole lot of detail, but we were able to find it online, Missy did, and he had a copy of the law. So hopefully, maybe Chris, owner of the department, will look into what it is necessary for us to opt into that. We went over time, so we didn't get a chance to discuss number three in our agenda, which is the Action Community Development Block Grant and Home Improvement Partnership Program, which there's an amendment that's gonna be voted on hopefully next week. And that amendment goes something like this in accordance with the Citizen Participation Plan and U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD regulations. The city of Jamestown proposed changes to activities found in the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three annual action plans. Our activities have already been approved per citizen participation prior to the adoption of the two thousand fifteen dash two thousand nineteen Consolidated Action Plan and subsequent action plans. Effective activities are funded with community development block grant and home funds. The department should be available for any additional information regarding this. And a summary of all the changes to the CDBG allocations and home program guidelines will be attached to the amendment transmitted to HUD prior to the implementation of the substantial amendment. And then lastly, we did get to was number four on your agenda, where it's got an acronym, CAPER, stands for Consolidating Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. And the Department of Development has prepared that report describing the achievements for fiscal year twenty-three, block grants and home investment partnership program funds in reference to the goal. So it's gonna be made for public comment for next Monday. And then we'll hopefully pass it and the mayor can be authorized to direct for that CAPER program. Other than that, Crystal, anything you want to add that we may have jumped over or didn't get to?
Yeah, really quickly. So the CAPER is our annual report that we submit to HUD. Just summarizing, in their format, that they provide for us what accomplishments we have made using HUD funding our annual allocations each year. So it is in draft form. You have the draft. Public comment is open presently. And so we're just seeking approval to submit it once we have incorporated all public comments and any feedback that any of you may have. With the resolution, the previous resolution that you mentioned, we will do this often, sometimes a couple of times around the year. We are constantly evaluating how we're spending funds, making sure that we are getting our HUD funding out into the community. It does our community no good to sit and wait to be used. We had really good success with the mini-grant program through ARPA. And we used that as a basis to develop a new HUD-funded program that replicates that. So that is what this request is. We had a number of other programs that there were small amounts left over in those programs out of fiscal year twenty twenty-two and twenty-three, I think maybe some from twenty twenty-one. So that's what that request is, is to essentially reallocate those small amounts into this new grant, which would give us roughly fifty, almost fifty-three thousand to be able to put into small housing repair grants, very similar to the mini-grant program that we ran. So happy to answer any questions on either one of those things.
Would that be it, Ms. President?
Can I move on to fight answer?
Thank you, Ms. President. We have no members of the public hearing. We did have seven resolutions. The first is a resolution requesting that the governor and the state legislature committee be bringing a fifty million dollar increase in unrestricted state aid in the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six state budget to Ms. Alvin. If this continues in subsequent years. It's been, what, fifteen years since we had an increase in any of that kind of funding? That was approved. And that is a culvert replacement project over Minno Creek between Adam Street and the Chatacoin River. It goes underneath the Water Street. The city received a grant for one point five million dollars, but we do have to pay three hundred fifty thousand one hundred dollars to cover our costs of that. Mark, is some of that in-kind services, is that the engineering services, is that part of three hundred?
No, so that project will be done by, so we're still in the design phase.
Okay.
Once this contract goes through, we design, there might be some city work that can be done to decrease the cost.
But this is a cost, the project is done completely by contractors. It's done by contractors, okay. It's designed by the city engineers?
No, that's also
Oh, that's done, oh, okay. So this is, be our share of it. When is the project expected to take place?
So construction season twenty twenty-six would be the earliest that we can The engineering and designing work and property easements, that would be done next year, in twenty twenty-six.
And that was approved by our committee?
May I ask a question about that? So the city's responsible, prior to getting any of this grant line, the city's responsible for three hundred fifty thousand one hundred dollars, is that correct?
The city is responsible for the cost of the project over one point five million. So the project, once the project gets spent past one point five million, the city's responsible for this.
Is that why there's this language in that the city of Jamestown shall be responsible for all costs of the project, including costs which exceed the amount of the reimbursement available from the New York Bridge funding awarded to the city of Jamestown?
Yes, that's correct.
So if we go over that amount, then we're responsible for that, correct?
Yep.
I have concerns about that, because, I mean, let's face it, we're a little gun-shy over the building down on Washington Street. So a lot of people are gun-shy about just having open-ended
Well, so this
verbiage like that?
That resolution comes from New York State. They say that's the resolution we have to pass to fulfill the contract, basically. So they wrote that.
How can we be sure that it is going to fall within the parameters of those numbers?
So we, our office will be turned to the engineers, and we'll work with them to do our best to stay under those numbers. Once we have engineers and it's designed and we have a project budget, then it'll go on to contractors for bid, and it's going to be the lowest cost wins.
And if we run into surprises or?
The city, anything over one point five million, the city will be responsible.
That concerns me.
Yep.
Otherwise, we don't get the money at all.
Yeah, so if you don't agree to it this way, then the city's on the hook for all of it. And there's current, I mean, this is the culvert that currently has and has had a hold in it for a year and a half in St. Vincent's parking lot.
St. Susan's?
St. Susan's, I'm sorry.
He said forty-fourty.
Yeah, but I know what he meant. I know what he meant. I know he meant St. Susan's.
Well, we have some, once the study is done, and are we going to have some projected numbers of cost? And you'll keep us up to date?
Yep.
So there's no surprises?
Yeah, they do have money by then.
Okay, the next is the reallocation of the funds from CDBG and HOM to the Small Housing Repair Program Phil and Chris will talk about, for a total amount of fifty-two thousand seven hundred twenty-three dollars and any cents. That was approved. And there will be a public hearing on that next week, right? And the next resolution is the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, and that was approved as well. And a public hearing on that next week as well. The next is a change order with Arpati Concrete Excavating for the ADA Sidewalk Ramps twenty twenty-four, with additions and some deduction. It will be a total net increase of eleven thousand four hundred forty-one dollars and thirty-one cents, slipped into the Corporation Council. Mark, are they just ended up doing more work than they thought they would be doing?
Yeah, that's correct.
And that is Chip's money?
Yep.
That was approved. Next is suspending the hiring freeze and hiring one laborer in the Department of Public Works Street Division. This position is vacant as a result of a recent resignation. That was approved. And final resolution was also submitted by Ryan Biggs Clark Davis Engineering Surveying of Clifton Park, New York to perform visual scoping evaluation of existing municipal parking garages at the park. And also, scoping is seventy-eight hundred dollars, phased to destructive evaluation and limited testing of thirty-five thousand hours. Or can you describe destructive evaluation test?
So, keep it short, the way that the parking ramps on Cherry Street and Main Street are built is there's tension cables in the slabs, and when they're constructed, those cables are fully tensioned, and as time goes, they just naturally lose tension. So they will, there's points at the end that are routed, so they'll pull those off, and then they will find places in the beams and slabs where they can basically cut and observe what those cables look like, and then test the tension that they have on those cables still.
So that was approved. We did get some good news from the sales tax for the third quarter. It was up two point five percent over the third quarter twenty twenty-three. However, total sales tax is down approximately ninety thousand dollars for the whole year. Hopefully, the fourth quarter is a good quarter and recover some of that loss, but we're not totally positive about that. We did talk about some proposed budget adjustments in the Finance Committee here. Tony and I met with comptroller Erica today, and she went over some additional expenses or adjustments that we have to make. Everybody should have a copy of this. We're proposing to increase the fuel for the police department for ten thousand dollars for a year to bring it up to the twenty twenty-four level. There's a embedded longevity in the comptroller budget, so we need to add another four thousand seven hundred sixty dollars. Increase Medicare premiums for retirees, so seventy-three thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars. But then we have a decrease in health insurance expenses of twenty-three thousand six hundred forty-seven dollars. And we're also proposing to cut the human rights budget of two thousand dollars, because actually, they didn't have any money in their budget for twenty twenty-four. So the total expense increase decrease is an increase of sixty-three thousand ninety-nine dollars that we need to add to our budget. But up above there, we did add a projected increase in sales tax based on the third quarter report. So we're going to add eight seven thousand two hundred fifty-one dollars to the proposed projection of the sales tax. Use an additional five hundred dollars of ARPA funds. And if we go down about halfway, there's a fund balance adjustment, use an additional hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. So the net impact is a lowering of the twenty twenty-five tax levy of six hundred forty-nine thousand one hundred fifty dollars, which will bring the projected tax increase down to three hundred six, or excuse me, three point six one percent, down from the executive budget of seven point six four percent. So that's a decrease of just over four percent. These were proposals, these were suggestions. If anybody else has anything else they would like to suggest, any council members, please let us know. We're going to give these changes into the agenda for our budget. We vote on the budget next week, next Monday night. Any questions on that?
I'll just make a quick comment, just, I mean, people here are percentages. So these amounts would lower the tax increase to three point six one percent. Just to give you an idea, if you have a house that's assessed at ninety thousand dollars in the City of Jamestown, that would be roughly, like I said roughly, because I haven't done it, but about a seventy-five dollar tax increase for the whole year. Where it was roughly around a hundred and fifty dollars, it would slash you down to about seventy-five dollars for the whole year, divided by twelve would give your monthly amount. That's all.
So in effect, this cuts the budget increase in more than half. Slightly more than half.
I think we're, you know, none of us want to see taxes go up, obviously, but I think, you know, some individuals see these percentages, and in their mind, they think the amounts are much greater than they're going to be. But obviously, we need to think about, everyone, and I do agree with Mr. Champ, we need to think about, you know, our disabled, our elderly, and where someone might be able to absorb an amount of tax increase, maybe there's someone that's going to, that's going to cause more hardship. So obviously, none of us want to see this increase, but we need to limit the impact overall for the general public, including everyone. Obviously, that helps.
Again, there's some risk involved, because we know that twenty twenty-four is going to be a very tight budget, and twenty twenty-four, at the end of this year, the end of twenty twenty-five, and then the next year. So, you know, we're going to be running into the same type of issues, so trying to be as brutal as possible, but obviously, keeping the taxpayers what they can reasonably afford as well. So trying to balance that out, just trying to find my chart too, if I remember off the top of my head. I dropped my book to the other day, and it opened up all the pages of books. I tried to put them back in the right spot. The tax increase, we haven't had tax, major tax increase, yeah, twenty-ten, I believe, was about seven percent at that time.
Almost eight percent, yeah.
Yeah, and then in twenty fifteen, sixteen, it was about four percent.
Four percent, yeah.
And since that time, it's either been decreased or been very, very close to negative. And so, again, you know, like everything else, our costs have gone up, and we're trying to do the best we can to balance off, you know, increasing costs, decreasing revenues in some cases. Again, we've been blessed the last several years where the sales tax increased every single year, and in some cases, completely exceeding even what we budgeted. And so this year, you know, this is the one year that it isn't going to come out that way, you know, it's to kind of, to balance out, to even out, and hopefully, the fourth quarter will be a little bit better, maybe that's a good sign of a trend maybe moving in a different direction coming, going into twenty twenty-five. But, you know, these are all things that we have to keep in mind, so I think it's not a perfect scenario, but it at least gives a little bit of a, little bit of a relief and cuts it proposal in half. If anybody has any other questions or ideas, whatever, you know, we certainly have a whole other week to go through that, but we've already passed the time in which we can prefile those, so they'll have to put together amendments that can be made on the night of the vote next week on the floor, so.
Under new business.
Under new business, and then the staff will be putting that together for us to review this week.
That's all we have from Puddings.
Okay. Steph, what would you say?
Thank you, Mr. President. Missy Paterniti spoke about some concerns that she has for crosswalks in the area of Foot Avenue near Arterio, Washington Street near Thirteenth, and then also in the square. She had brought up an idea that I believe she'd seen down at the Village of Faulkner with more signage, drawing more attention to the crosswalks down there, and she brought up whether the city could potentially look at that type of signage down there, making those crosswalks more visible. Ms. Paterniti drives the city a lot, probably more than many of us do for her job, and tends to see a lot of dangerous situations or situations that she considers dangerous for pedestrians or nearly struck, people engaging in vehicle and traffic law violations, and just not being conscious of a lot of people walking around the city. So we talked about that a little bit, and then we also had three resolutions on streetlights, one on Arlington, on pole number one-one-three-three-five, that was approved, a second one on Palmer Street near Spray, and that was approved. And then we had a third one in the area of Pershing near Ohio, and that was approved. We also had a special event for the Christmas parade to be held on Saturday, December seventh, from ten AM until eight-thirty PM, including setup and tear down. The parade will run along Third Street, beginning at Hunt Road and concluding at Second Street, where there will be fireworks by skylighters will conclude the event. And Collaborative Children's Solutions and Mr. Smiraldo is instrumental in this event. We have an outstanding, beautiful Christmas tree that was delivered today to Tracy Plaza. It's a great looking tree, it's all posted online for that. As always, this is a great event that the city puts on every year, and we usually have a very large crowd, and it's just great to see everyone downtown and getting together to celebrate the holidays. The last thing I brought up was, I had written an email to Mark about a guide rail that had been removed up by Purcell School in front of the school when we redesigned the roadway up there. I've had some people have some concerns. I did talk to the superintendent, also President Abbott from the school board. I asked them if they'd like to see that back. They did say they'd like to see that placed back. Mark doesn't agree, says it's not needed due to the new redesign. I do want to go up there myself and take a better look at it. I did, I've driven through there, but never got out and kind of really looked at how things are, so I want to do that and check that out. I don't want to speak for the superintendent of the school district, but the school, the superintendent did kind of mention that, you know, there was even a possibility that maybe they could possibly kick in some money to have that replaced. So if you would, Mark, if you could give me the cost of, if we were to replace that, how much that would cost to put that back? My concern is, is even though that turn down there is a lot more gradual and people have to slow down, not everyone slows down because not everyone obeys the vehicle and traffic law, and it's going to get slippery there. I'm concerned about a car is going to come down, go up over that curb, and into the front lawn of the school, and possibly strike a child. I know there's fifth graders that, I believe that's the fifth grade door right there. Kids hang out in the morning and after school, be catching rides, and I'm just concerned about their safety. So I'm going to take a look at it myself, and if you could give us the price on what it would cost to put that back. That was it.
Okay, and I suggested maybe, Mark, looking at different techniques of creating a blocking force, whether it's stones, rocks, or poles, or something might be a little less expensive.
All right. Good, thank you. Please?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. We had three resolutions, and they were all covered in finance, so I'll just briefly go over them, and that would have been the change order for the flat work. It's actually for the ADA sidewalk ramps that we have to be compliant with, the state with, and there was some extra work with those ramps that needed to be done, to the tune of eleven thousand four hundred forty-four dollars. And the second thing is, was to lift the hiring freeze for a Department of Public Works employee that is a vacancy, and looking to backfill that job with a labor position. And the other, the third resolution, like Brent said before, is the scoping evaluation for the parking ramps, and which the, which we are required to do every three years, according to what Mark told us before, and today also. And there probably is money left in the bond to possibly pay for the forty-two thousand eight hundred dollars for that. And so we, all those resolutions passed, and we did hear from Citizen Doug Champ in reference to possibly getting some extra revenue for charging for street lighting, possibly to for-profit businesses that utilize the streetlights and get them metered, and we did talk about that briefly, to see if that would be feasible at all to, he said it would offset and spread the money to more people that would help pay for the electric bill in the City of Jamestown. So we discussed that, but nothing in that, that's all we have.
Thank you. For any else?
Mr. President, I asked the clerk's office to throw in each of our packets, a request for anybody who'd like to sign the petition for the Chautauqua Lake Property Owners Association. It does affect the Chatacón River and the city. It does affect the Chatacón River and the city and McCray Point, and we should seriously take a look at that. There's a symposium in Venus this Saturday, 9:30 to 11:00, at the Lawson Center, which is the museum, it's across from the Old Heron House, if that's not there, 73 Lakeside Drive. So if anybody's interested in attending that and seeing how this new BEC regulation may affect our wetlands here in the city, I would behoove that somebody do that. Also, I'd like to reach out to the public, maybe somebody knows where some of these bronze markers that are being pilfered, stolen, or resold, I'm not sure, I think they had stolen, I counted what, four, maybe? There are leaks that have been stolen and asking help from the citizenry to report any suspicious activity or knowing anybody has had a hand in that. And then lastly, well, not last, sixty-five liberties, is that on your radar at all, Crystal?
Sixty-five, probably. I know that area is-
It's a new build? Looks like a tiny house on-
Oh, the shed?
It's, I don't know if it's a shed.
Shed, it's been there for a while.
Yeah, it's been there, yeah.
It's been there a long time.
So they're calling it a shed?
Yeah, we went through a whole, yeah.
So they're calling it a shed?
It, yeah, I think that's what they called it.
Okay, I was surprised to see it pop up.
Yeah, we went through a whole thing.
Did they get a permit for the shed?
They did. Yep, they did everything right.
Oh, wow, cool. And then lastly, I was hopeful that we were making inroads to the tiny house market. But I just thought, I-
It doesn't quite qualify for that, but we are looking at Tony, so. And we have been looking at small houses and some alternatives to help with our housing crisis, so. But that is not one of them.
Thank you. And then last thing, Tim, Police Chief Director of Public Safety, Tim Jackson, published nuisance numbers and stats. And since Zach's here, I'd like to commend Zach for all the hard work as a one-man team producing those kind of numbers for our city. So Zach, thanks for all you do for the department and our citizens.
All right, you're up.
I'm going to keep it short and sweet. I have Councilman Russell mentioned the Christmas tree on the plaza was delivered today. It is a beautiful forty-foot new Norway spruce donated by Woodlawn Management. So I'd like to publicly thank Lake Shore Paving who hauled it and helped the Parks Department, of course, put it up. It was interesting, I never got to see the actual production of putting it up, and it was really quite interesting to watch a little bit, so. It looks great, I can't wait to see it decorated. I also want to reiterate the Christmas lighting, home lighting contest. And that is really kicking off, and nominations are going to start the 24th through the 14th. So encourage your streets, your friends, your ward members, your whoever to decorate their house. Online voting, it'll go through 1214, online voting is 1215 to 1220. And I want to, again graciously, thank the Greater Chautauqua Federal Credit Union and the Southern Chautauqua Federal Credit Union donating a hundred-dollar gift card to, from the Chamber of Shop Chautauqua for each ward. So get some participation out there, you guys, if you see homes, you can nominate them, police officers as they drive around, Public Works workers, anybody can nominate a home that they see is worthy of it. Thank you, Missy, for the idea, and our department for running with it, so I think it's great. The weather's been cooperative so far to get your house decorated, so.
We have a competition for award, or award win?
You know, someone actually asked me the other day, and I even said to him, you know, get your neighbors together, make it a street, have a function with your neighbors. Use the gift card for your neighbors themselves, you know. So it's only open to residential, multifamily are included, but one nomination per, you can't do it by floor or by apartment, so. But lots of things to do there, and I think it'll be great to see some decorating. I think we're still, it's still a work in progress, we'll probably publish a list with those addresses and update it as they come in for people to drive by and see, so that way they know that one A, a house has already been nominated, or B, if it hasn't, to submit it, so. And then I only have one other item for executive session, and that is with Elliot and ongoing litigation and the chief. Sorry, Tim. It should be quick.
Have a motion to go into an executive discussion? No action?
No.
Second? Andrew, all in favor?